Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. Notice I ain't no music live. I just felt like being trapped out this morning. Is that okay with you? Feel like being trapped out? So yesterday, Thornton Township, they had a meeting. This the first meeting since the brawl for it all. Now, they made special rules yesterday to where the only the media could be upstairs. All the viewing public had to be downstairs. It was done via Zoom and some things of that nature. I'm not exactly sure. But what stands out to me about that being held in there. They doing all of this because of the fight that broke out that Tiffany joined in. You know, it's the first fight that didn't happen at Thornton Township probably in the history ever of Thornton Township. So they doing this. But I remember when Carmen had her restraining order and she was saying she felt like Carmen and Gonzalez felt like it was unsafe and they wanted safety measures provided at the board meetings and they were shunned. But old Tiffany says it now shit is filed into place, but when the other board members and trustees wanted security, it was a no-go. I don't know how that works. But um, from what I under, I don't even know how this goes as y'all see it's forty-two minutes of nothing. Just nothing. It was just nothing. There wasn't shit going on. And I think they finally started. I do believe Tiffany showed up via Zoom or something or the other. But let's see what happened. I don't know how they doing public comments. None of that. It's all new to me. Watching it with y'all. The pledge of allegiance. Carmen look like she on the Ozempic. Who is this lady? Nigga, security. He ain't gonna do nothing neither. His hands ain't in position to do nothing. His hands are holding his vest, so if anything break off, he, he, he ain't ready. If he need to pull that pistol right quick, he can't do it because his hands on there. Carmen on the Ozempic. Motion, pay. What was the motion? Is it me or did I not hear the motion?
Because trustee Gonzalez is already in the meeting, we have to make a motion to appoint him as the chair?
Yes.
Who's the pregnant girl?
Trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Trustee Wiedemann?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes. Right, um, thank you. Yes, if I could, uh, we that uh, public comment wasn't put on the agenda. Um, however, obviously, um, we do want to hear, um, any of the public who wishes to make a comment. We should, we could do so now. Uh, but like I said, it was, it was an error, um, not something potentially was done. So, uh, we could go ahead and do that now and then, uh, you know, proceed. Okay. All right, also since I got, we got a minute or so, um, as you can see, we're missing a few people, but that's okay. Um, so it may be a little messy as far as just getting going, um, but you know, we've got some business to do. We'll take care of that. And hopefully it won't be bumpy and, uh, we'll take it from there.
Is the public comment gonna work? Let's see.
Okay, so no, no, somebody signed up for a public comment, so we'll be
Nope. Nigga, nobody signed up because it wasn't on the agenda. What the fuck?
The next item is own business. Business, uh, we have two items.
I have a question, um, about these items. Are we just discussing the items tonight? And then we'll make, you know, a decision at a later date.
Yeah, yeah, that was my understanding as well, that, uh, put them on for discussion, um, and then we'll take a vote at a later time. Uh, so do we want to? Should we do, how do you guys want to do it? Do we do first and second and then any discussion or do you just want to leave it for uh, the closed session?
If, if I may, you can do a motion just to call it for discussion. If the board does not intend to take any action on it, the agenda item listed on the agenda does allow for action to be taken, but the intention of the board is simply to have the discussion that is allowed. Just do a motion to call the item for discussion, have that seconded and then the other discussion.
And then after that's
Who is the white lady on the screen if it ain't public comment?
Whatever, actually, I mean, meeting, whether it be tabled or whatever, we could do that after the discussion, um, on both items or?
Correct, correct. If you wanted to table
Yeah, we gotta watch Marcus Jordan's arrest footage, body cam footage. This nigga crazy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion, um, to discuss the revised twenty-four, twenty-five budget for general assistance. Order number twenty-four, zero, zero, nine. Second. Okay, so one thing I do want to discuss, um, one of, one of my biggest
Yep.
Okay, trustee Wiedemann?
Yes.
Trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Trustee supervisor, supervisor, supervisor.
Yes.
And if I may, just to be clear, that is not a motion in
It was a motion to discuss. So, um, I just wanted to give the public this opportunity to see and proposing is on the township website. If you go, um, in the upper right-hand corner to the drop-down bars, there's a, a drop down there that says financials. If you click on that, all three of the budgets that, that are being proposed are listed there. I have been working, I've had a, some emails, um, some back and forth with the finance director, who has been answering questions and, you know, things along those lines. So for, for me, um, this was more an opportunity for the public to have a view of what is being proposed and then have, although it may be a small timeframe to ask questions, to still be able to ask questions and, and, you know, kind of have an understanding of, of what's happening here. So, um, you know, everybody, we, we know, you know, during public comments, there may not be answers. But I do have an email address. I would always be more than willing to, to answer questions. So I'm available at any time. So now we make a motion to table item one.
Um, if that's the action.
So sorry, correct, yes. So I'll make the motion to table the adopted revised twenty-four, twenty-five budget until, um, until a later date. I'll second. Okay, trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Trustee Wiedemann, right?
Yes.
And supervisor, supervisor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, one, one quick question. When was that table till? I couldn't hear.
You said until, she just said until a later date.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine. I, yeah, you guys can just put it on a future agenda. It gives you a little bit of flexibility.
Yeah, correct, because we're meeting next week, so I'm not sure. You know, yeah, we, we don't want to box ourselves in like that, so, okay.
Understood.
I would like to make a motion to table the budget for general fund, budget number twenty-four, zero, one, zero, until a later date.
Second.
Trustee Wiedemann?
Yes.
Trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Yes.
Not table it.
All right, next item on the agenda is closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session. Do I have to say we're to discuss things? Should I include that? Discuss hiring, discipline, performance, compensation, compensation and the dismissal of certain personnel, legal counsel, real estate matters pending probate or imminent litigation. Trustee Wiedemann?
Yes.
Trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Going to close session at four twenty-eight.
Okay, let's see. I don't know how long it take them to come back out. Clearly they're not back yet. I need to know my ass. Bro, I got my green screen up for ninety-nine cents.
Like a backdrop screen.
Yeah, look like these motherfuckers. This is a whole bunch of nothing. Want to hear Vivian talk the whole time. Sheesh. Critical smoker. Okay, they bad. I don't know how far back I need to take. Okay, we'll go from there. Well, it took about thirty minutes.
A motion, I'll make a motion to resume the regular board meeting. I'll second. Okay, trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Trustee Wiedemann?
Yes.
Right, so now we are on item six, action coming out of closed session.
Effective immediately, Kamal Woods?
Second.
Ooh. Now they getting Kamal a better there.
Trustee Wiedemann?
Yes.
Trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Said no last time she said y'all just, y'all just cause more lawsuits. Thank you for the lawsuit. Ah, ha. They get him a better there.
I would like to make effective immediately, William Moore?
Ain't he already fired?
Yes.
This nigga been fired twice.
Yes.
Now he get fired twice. Wait, that's it?
Second.
That's it?
Trustee Carlo?
Yes.
Well damn, little ass meeting.
Yes.
Five oh six.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
That's crazy. That was it? That, that was it? Seriously? That was all? Thirty-seven minutes. This is not enough. Yeah, hold on. Let me find something else. This is, can't get jiggy with this shit. That was a waste of time. I, I should have watched. That was a total waste of time. Let me find something else. Yeah, I don't care about that. The meeting's over. Uh, that's crazy. Hold on y'all while I find something else. Um, I'm into my, my go-to. I didn't know that shit was gonna be that short. And I don't care about these other peoples. Ooh, my hair is worn. The OG went out. Alright, said Black History Month is just a bunch of bull crap that blacks don't even, uh, don't respect. And he go prove it to y'all. I don't know how. I ain't heard this. Hold on, let me get these commercials out the way. Let's keep it here, alright. Hold on y'all, I'm coming. I'm coming. Nah, he wasn't loud. He ain't cooked that long.
Steven. Steven threw five dollars at your boy.
Responsive.
Christopher says sure could use a show. Let me tell y'all why we're doing the show tonight. I did not get it yesterday. But I got it now and I hope Herb is out there watching. I'm gonna give him another thumbs up.
Can y'all hear that?
And then sent another fifty dollars and said, do the damn show. So Herb, if you out there, if you're out there watching, let me know if you're out there watching. Just let me know. If you, if you's out there watching. Wonderful thing. I mean, Herb always showing love. Somebody said they love Black History Month and they a white person. Oh y'all, you can love it. I, I just have my thoughts of it and I'm going to explain my thoughts of it. I think it's a bunch of bull crap and I'm gonna explain to you why and I don't think anybody will be able to dispute me. But if they would like to come dispute me, they are welcome to come and jump on the show. I'd like to talk about, uh, some things I've been going through, which is really weird. A lot of you people are weird.
Yeah, I just, because y'all didn't answer me and I'm just gonna go off with my screen was saying that it wasn't, uh, that it, it, well, see, now you say something after I refrished it, but my screen was saying nah, they can't. Saying something was going on with the page. I was trying to split them up.
Look what water weight does to, to your body. Number one, stop drinking too much water. People often.
Military gadgets are transforming people's conditions and endurance, and here's how. This is what happens when you breathe in more oxygen and this military
He sent me a cash app and then, let me see. Do, because Herb sent me fifty dollars. He got me drunk. That's why I would say this, um, somebody said they love Black History Month and they a white person. Oh y'all, you can love it. I, I just have my thoughts of it and I'm going to explain my thoughts of it. I think it's a bunch of bull crap and I'm gonna explain to you why and I don't think anybody will be able to dispute me. But if they would like to come dispute me, they are welcome to come and jump on the show. I'd like to talk about, uh, some things I've been going through, which is really weird. A lot of you people are weird. Somebody named, uh, Jimmy Fluffer. Jimmy Fluffer, uh, tweeted my thing, uh, tweeted me on my thing about Black History Month. And mi- mind you, Jimmy Fluffer does not follow me. Mr. Fluffer said So I'm gonna put it on the screen to you guys, what Mr. Fluffer decided to say. This is what Mr. Fluffer said to me. We don't need your permission to celebrate
Last thirty-six is when y'all said it.
Why did someone need to post?
Two minutes ago.
Why did someone need to post, dear America, we don't need your permission to celebrate Black History Month? Who was trying to stop them from celebrating Black History Month? So what I decided to do was take their post and make my own. You know, I didn't do like a lot of people. I'm not trying to be irritating. I just took it and I, I said, well, as I said, blacks are just human nats. No one has told blacks they can't celebrate, uh, not only Black History Month, but Black History Year. Funny how Jews don't need Jew History Month to celebrate their heritage amongst themselves. And somebody told me, well, Jews, Jewish history month is made. They don't need the month to celebrate their history among themselves. These Negroes stay on social media acting like they are moving the needle by being armchair revolutionaries. I don't know one black person in my family or friends who have one event planned this month. Blacks don't teach their children a damn thing during, uh, this month. Hell, we can't even marry our baby mamas or keep our kids out of being the dumbest students in America. But y'all will sit online pretending whites are trying to keep
Oh, that, that was a mouthful. But I, I just would like to take this moment to brag and say, um, all you women out there that said I'm a bad parent, I told y'all we could go grade for grade and award for award and pictures for pictures. And I don't think y'all have been showing what y'all kids can do. Why isn't it? Y'all supposed to be the most experienced in the best rears of children ever. And why ain't seen the honor roll stuff? I'm just saying, why, why have I not seen these things, huh? Eh, what, oh, this is, do they color? Can we see that? What, what are we doing? They can judge me and say my child gonna grow up to not be shit and I ain't teaching that child nothing, but how to make the honor roll. That's all I'm doing. That, what, what is you doing with the foster grandchild? What is they mammy do? What is the mammy doing with the foster Griffin? That's all I'm saying. Can, can we see it, anybody? Uh, because Buns, you had shit to say, fuck it. All you hoes with kids that had something to say about my parenting, can we see what y'all little kids have been doing? Kindergarten, look, I don't even give a fuck what grade they in. Kindergarten, can we see what they doing? Okay. Alright then, I'm gonna keep making you motherfuckers mad.
Keep you from celebrating a month that no one can keep you from celebrating nor cares if you do. Just stop trying to force others to care. I asked, am I right or am I wrong? Thank you, Dre Dream. What's going on? So then I got Jimmy Fluffer. As you guys can see, Jimmy Fluffer said, you're right. I still think you're a dick. Yeah. His name's Jimmy Fluffer and he's saying you're, it's probably one of them facts. So I re, well, I replied to him. I said, don't worry. I don't get online to care what you think of me. I post to be correct, not to be like. Most truth tellers are hated and liars are logic. This person said facts, but May is Jewish Heritage Month. And I said, no, I'm saying they don't need it. You don't see them telling you how you need it, uh, or forcing you to celebrate it. It's what we're doing. Let me see, let me get the rest of what Jimmy was saying. We gotta get, okay, show more replies. I was like, where's it at? There it is. So Jimmy then says, damn, you went straight to the opinion that doesn't matter. You're welcome for telling me that you are, that you were right. So he's trying, trying to say that since I said his opinion of what I said doesn't matter, why did I go straight to his opinion that I said doesn't matter? What would be to hopefully let him know that the next time you say something to me, why don't you talk about if I'm right or if I'm wrong, why would you let me know that you think I'm a dick? I think that's odd, is all I was letting him know, but you know, that's how whores are. Here we go. I said, yes, to let you know to get off my dick. Y'all are the only people who think telling another man what you think of them is manly, but then you are a fluffer. So carry on.
It's not my fault. My baby can sing, dance, draw, do the books and like cheerleading. She can, she can do it all. Only thing she can't do is ride that bike. We working on it. That's, that's her one, her one flaw right now, riding the bike, but we are working on it. We, we working on it. Cause I can't keep pushing her, because that's just, yeah, but that's it. And that she can, she can do YouTube. She can hold a conversation with adults. She, she, she command the room. She can do it all. She's a star. She's a star, uh. And she can play Roblox. I don't even know how to do that. But you know, she, she good at Roblox too. She's a star. She can do a lot of shit.
Jimmy Fluffer says, oh, I don't want that little thing. If you feel better thinking I do, you may. What? I then just simply said, please never tweet me again, sir. You brought up dick, not me. I'm a dick. Leave me alone. Please, sir and or ma'am. He replies. Stupid cats chasing the actual mouse on the screen. He replies, hung like a hamster. Mind you, this is a man. Headbutt, I'm throwing two hundred dollars at your boy. Said been a while, finally caught a, a live stream salute Tommy. Throw some money at your boy. I like it. Y'all don't let Jimmy outdo y'all by himself. It's Jimmy versus the field right now. And that is wrong. It is Jimmy versus the field. Oliver threw a dollar at me and said chuck a buck. But Tommy, it's Jimmy versus the field. Now, the show is sponsored by Mr. Herbert though.
Crank the toes, but she gotta crank
So I'm, I'm feeling a lot better.
I even got on it and showed her how she was supposed to do it. She's like daddy.
Yeah, relatively to their size. I think hamsters are relatively hung. There you go. There's Mr. Herb right there. Herb, the show is sponsored by him. I didn't get your, uh, cash app until today. I didn't see it. Um, so that is my bad, but as soon as I got it, I said, you know what? And I'm gonna get up and do that show.
So I had to give y'all something else. Otherwise it would have been a thirty-seven minute live.
So anyway, here's
Twenty minutes
More things that you see, like somebody named, um, I, I, um, he's still tweeting, still haven't learned. Somebody named Carl. So here's what I did with, uh, I had tweeted, question, if blacks are so great, then can you explain to me why black countries aren't the most advanced? Why black countries aren't the safest and why people aren't trying to force blacks to allow immigration?
Uh, Tommy, you must have never heard of Wakanda. Uh, great black nation, sir. World's number one source on vibranium.
He says, bad point. If so, so Indians not great, most Asians not great, most of Europe and Russia not great, all of Central and South America not great. Eastern Europe, the original ghettos, not great. Point is, humans are all the same. Stop spouting racial illogical stuff, fam. I replied, sir, when I'm live, you never join. Those who refuse to have dialogue with me or haven't donated have no right to tweet.
Mr. Type Tweet Twitter.
Sorry, I was one hundred percent correct and embarrassed you with logic. You should block me. Elon Musk on this beach. Elon Musk owns this bitch. He does what whores do, which is somehow say he embarrassed me, which I don't know where he embarrassed me with logic. If he would like to talk to me, that would be great. And I asked them all to do that. I said, you have not embarrassed me with any logic. I don't know what you're talking about, but if you aren't going to be man enough to talk to me, I'm going to ask you to get off my page. Only bitches and hoes talk like that. You haven't embarrassed anyone but yourself. What is that? But yourself. And I shouldn't have to block another grown man from being irritated. I should simply be able to tell that grown man that if you don't respect me, then leave me alone and they should do that. Unless you are an ex-girlfriend who loved my dick so much, they are willing to stalk me online just to get my attention. Now you tell me, sir, which one are you?
Jeez.
He says, not gonna argue with you, Tom Cap. I help you pay for a fatherless America with three years of a hundred dollars to your website, sharing your videos for a decade.
I'm assuming life has been gave.
Defensively, uh, by me on that ten thousand Tommy haters page, but disrespect like this made me stop. You still haven't learned your lesson. Now, mind you, Carl said disrespect like this made him stop supporting me financially. But you know what it didn't make him do because this is my ninety nine thousand. This is my ninety nine thousand Twitter page.
You got a Twitter still up your own.
Carl for President Anthony follows me. Now why would Carl, who was running for president of the United States, who's following three hundred and fifteen people, but has a hundred and sixteen people following him? Why would he still be following me if I haven't learned my lesson? Cause I'm disrespectful? I haven't learned my lesson because I'm disrespectful, which is why he no longer supports me, no longer shares my stuff, but he follows me.
And tweets you.
I said, I don't give a shit ninja. I literally told you, I will have a conversation with you if you'd like, but if not, leave me the fuck alone. And since you stopped supporting me, then unfucking follow me. It's not that damn difficult. What do you think he said in response? Still haven't learned.
He had to say something bad.
Guess what I'm gonna say in response? Still haven't unfollowed. It is a damn shame. I said the same thing. That's why I said they do this like they're, Dre Dreams had it, it's sexual beef. These men, no, no grown man does this. They just move on. They got too many people online that they willing, they willing to fuck with. I'm not gonna sit here and argue with a man who says, I don't wanna talk to you. The fuck I look like? The nigga says, hey, look, whatever you gotta say, bro, I wanna hear. Cool. At that point, I can't make this man hear me. I can't make him hear me and I definitely ain't gonna tell somebody.
You gonna listen to me fool?
I beat you with their logic. That's why I destroyed you. They say stupid shit like that to make you say, wait a minute, how did you destroy me? What is, what's next? What, what do I do to not be destroyed? What do I do? I offered you to have a discussion with me. Uh, Sassy Girl said that every time I do my Twitter spaces, you're there, sir.
You just.
Surely, this would have been very difficult.
You, um.
I mean, very easy, bro. When I was in Detroit, because I don't stop y'all from doing it, but I don't wanna sit up here and have you just write me talking about you destroying me, leaving the fuck alone, stupid. Cause I don't even know what the, the argument was. You're telling me about other places, but it didn't change anything I said, which was nobody's fighting black countries to get in black countries. Black countries don't have to institute D E I. Why is that? That's a show for another day. But this show, ladies and gentlemen, is February the first and we talking about Black History Month, the shortest month.
Man, that's how he started. That's how he started Black History Month off.
A lot of months. Inside. But it's the shortest. T-Money that came in here through two hundred dollars at me.
See, at this point in the game, that's what I'm saying. Like initially, when I first heard him, I was like, oh my goodness. And I couldn't listen for like two years. But at this point in the game, I just see all this shit is comedy. With a sprinkle of truth up in there, but it's, it's, it's comedy. It's comedy. Yeah, yeah, people too. Yeah, I gotta stop taking shit so seriously.
We got two big ballers in the house. Y'all don't let them. Those two men have led the field. The fields would at least catch up with one of them niggas. Or niggrets or crackers. D Will nineteen ninety nine says, what's the spend the night with the Geek of the Night original song? And how do I join the telegram? Trying to see. See some fuck shit. D Will, all you gotta do is go, if you guys could share to him the link where they could find it on, um, probably maybe the best way to go about it might be to go to the all my links or go to, um. Well, you could email me and I can show you how to do it. Uh, if you email me at TJ at your world, my views dot com. I can show you how to join it as well. Um, that could be one way or just, but if you go to my all my links, it's like the first one, I think. And it, and it gets you in there. I, I get you right in. But if anybody can tell them or give them a link in the, uh, in, in, in the thing or show them where to go, that would be great. And the song is a song by, uh, Ronald Isley. And it's called Spend the Night. Would you spend the night? That's just how the song go. And Jimmy E Johnson seven says, Tommy, 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 hi brother. What's going on Jimmy? Jimmy's always showing love. So thank you very much. But it should, it should be able to take it there. T-Money says, I'm a ninja. Somebody said they wanted to debate. Who wanted to debate? If you wanna debate me, all you gotta do is ask. I will definitely let you. That's the reason why I brought up them two niggas who. As if we don't live in America where you can celebrate whatever the fuck you want in your house and in your community. But we gonna get into that, cause I may be wrong. But I think Black History Month is one of the most.
D E F things ever.
Stupid. Whatever fucking. Adjectives you guys can think of. It's bad. And it's how I view it. And I will tell you why in a minute. Mr. Big Stepping says shouts out to the gems. But Tommy Sotomayor. And also guys, if you would really like to, if you wanna donate, please do me a favor and do it over on the, um, GoFundMe or the, um, Indiegogo, because it shows what you guys are doing. So I can't hide it. I like when you do that. It's nice when they do it here too. It's cool. But over on the Indiegogo and over on the GoFundMe, it's better. I think one, I get it faster, maybe. Not really sure, but I know you can see it and I know they gonna give it. This is kinda like money in, 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 in these spaces. Why I don't really know where it goes. To be perfectly honest, it's nice to see though. But if you go there, at least the other people see it and it creates a synergy. I'm Tommy Sotomayor. Let's get into the show, ladies and gentlemen. You a grown ass man. You call me to troll me. Did you get what you want out of this? Did it make you feel better now? There's a game. Bit more. Sir, you remember? First, and I will, every year that I have breath in my body, we'll talk about how stupid black folks is. And I'll accentuate it on the first. Now I will talk about how stupid a lot of things that black folks do. I've had several black people, it's typically women, but they will always ask, well, why do you focus on certain things? And it's funny that those people will say this, cause those will be the same people who will watch MSNBC and all they focus on is the Republicans. So if I can't focus on one thing, why do they get to focus on one thing? Same as the pro blacks. The pro blacks get to focus on what the white man did. Now the, um, FBI's get to focus on the tab. They don't focus on what they're doing. They focus on what someone else is doing. And I tell you what, that at least makes me better than them. Cause let me tell you what I focus on. You ask me the question, what do I think? And this is where they all mess up. They ask me, well, what solutions do you have? What do you think we need to do going forward? And then when I start saying, well, black bitches need to do this and black bitches need to do that. Why do you concentrate on black bitches? Well, because you asked me, what do I think needs to happen going forward? That's part of what I believe that needs to go happen to go forward. Now I will talk about several things if you like, but I'm gonna start with what I think is the most prevalent thing. Now I know it will bother somebody and piss somebody off. I'm not trying to piss them off. I'm just trying to answer their question. I actually would think that people would be happy if you, if I answer their question and answered honestly. I was watching Bill Maher and I thought Bill Maher was upset at the way that Donald Trump answered a question that came from the press. The press asked Donald Trump if he would go to the site.
I wasn't around.
Of the airplane crash in Philadelphia, N L D C. He would go to the site.
Right, Rio. It's, it's comedy.
Triple shot of Jack on a late night time, perfect Saturday night, after a thirteen hour shift. I like it, never. So after the question was asked of the president, the president paused, thought for a minute and said, how am I gonna go to the site? The site's over the middle of the water. So what the fuck am I gonna do? Swim out there? What am I gonna do? Why would you ask me, will I go to the site of the crash? Either I'm gonna go where they landed in the water or somewhere in the stratosphere. Now I know they will probably say, you know what I mean? No, do you know what you mean? Cause if that's what you meant, then you should have said what you said. But since you said what you said. I'm gonna go do that. And I say this, Bill Maher said it. I like that, cause some questions are stupid. Stupid questions need to be, uh, 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 addressed that way. Now I learned when I was young, there's no such thing as a stupid question. How many of you guys believe that?
I fuck that. Hell. Hell, that there is such thing as a stupid question. Depending on who asking the motherfucker, but yes, there are stupid questions, sir. It's a whole bunch of stupid questions. I don't agree with that at all.
Questions are stupid? Well, I'm gonna tell you why I believe that there's no such thing as stupid, uh, stupid questions. There is no such thing and I guarantee you, none of y'all can dispute what I'm about to say. There's no such thing as a stupid question. It's only stupid people that ask questions.
It's only stupid people that ask questions. It's the same thing. It's still a stupid question.
There's no such thing as a stupid question. The question ain't stupid. The motherfucker who asked the question was stupid. The question just did what it did. So I look at it and I say, this is, they all don't steal this from me, but as I'm, I've always said, if people's always heard me say, there's no such thing, there's no such thing as a stupid question. It's just stupid motherfuckers that ask questions. So you gotta blame this jackass. Question up there like what? I didn't formulate myself. What did I do? I am the, I'm the translator. This nigga said that. I mean, what am I stupid translator because I said what he said? No, he said it.
Who is he talking to? He putting on a show.
C J gun, no boat cannot.
I could tell. It's some new pussy. He is looking over and, and, and interacting with this person. He doing his shtick. This new pussy, this at the house. I could tell.
Be true. If I say something dumb and you're the translator and you just translate what I said, does that make you dumb? All you did was translate what I said. That's all the question did. You, you put that out there. Question did not formulate itself. It just interpreted what you said. Yeah, like the person who asked the smart question, is the question smart or are they smart? That's a smart person that asked you that question. That's a smart person that did that thing. That's not a smart question.
It was a smart question.
It's not how that works. I'm just saying, y'all can nibble on that if you like, but I was impressed by the fact that he accepted that, hey, sometimes we want people to just be able to say, why should I patronize you? And your stupidity by acting like it isn't what it was. And sometimes the best way.
Okay, quick question. How do y'all feel about Trump banning transgender? Athletes and they will, pretty much he banning men from playing in women's sports, cause the women that was acting like men, they were still sucking anyway. So it, it no need. They just gave up on getting their ass whooped. But he banned men being able to compete against women in the, in sports. How do y'all feel about that? It's only right. It, it's fair. If the transgenders want to play a sports, they need to start a transgender league. It needs to be a separate transgender division. Separate but equal, separate but equal.
To discuss what somebody said that's stupid, it is to repeat it to them. How many of y'all have done that to somebody? Maybe they didn't know what, what they just said out of their mouth was dumb. So what do you do? We'll repeat it. Repeat it to them. If you don't think what you just said to me was stupid, then I'm gonna repeat it back to you and see how you process it. If you can't process what came out your own damn mouth, then what do you think other people are supposed to do with that shit? What am I supposed to do with this?
Shout out to the twelve.
You just made everybody in the room fifty percent dumb because of what you just said. I gotta wash these people's brains. I gotta sit up there and, and, and get these people to not realize it's not your fault. It's his.
Pedigree of Money Boy Trey.
They done put a bad equation into the computer and the computer's about to fucking crash. It's not the computer's fault. It's theirs. Now I say to you guys, that's how I feel about Black History Month. Not that the idea of blacks celebrating Black History Month is a bad thing, because I say this. Oh yeah, the link, uh, 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 thank you. I, I keep telling you this. Larry, that is not my all my links. Why do you keep putting that, that all my links up there? That is wrong. I don't know that nigga. I do not know this nigga. You keep putting that up there. That money's going to somebody and you keep wanting them to get it. If I don't know who you, if this guy got something going on, that ain't mine.
Oh shit.
Organizations want to ban this common kitchen item. If you're still using a plastic or wooden cutting board, you need to hear this every time.
And it ain't me.
Well, those who are watching, that is not my all my links. My all my links is TJ Sotomayor K O C. That is mine. That will send you to me. That other one will send you to some nigga. I do not know. You're gonna have to stop posting that one. It's been about fourteen times. Anyway, but I talk about Black History Month, not because having a Black History Month is a bad thing. It isn't a bad thing if you like to do it, but it also should not be a thing you're trying to force other people to observe. President's Day is a nice day, but you're not gonna force me to go celebrate President's Day, are you? You cannot force me to do any of these things. I don't have to take them seriously. The funny part about it is I don't even have to take the Fourth of July seriously and people don't. I don't have to fly the flag on Fourth of July and people don't. Christmas is a holiday in which everybody in the world get on. Muslims and Jews alike. And they don't have to put up a nativity scene outside. Right? Cinco de Mayo, guess who get, go crazy? I made Lucas, if they people hit the, uh, if people hit my, um.
Niggas.
GoFundMe and I bow to space right now. It's at fifty seven fifteen, we started. So I've gotten LaDarius Johnson. He put ten dollars on it. Well, no. It's at fifty seven twenty five and that was the last person to do it. So nobody's hit the GoFundMe today. Not a single soul. That's cool though. That's fine. Sometimes it happens. It's life. That's what people say. But anyway. Cinco de Mayo is celebrated by a bunch of Mexicans. We don't, we, they don't tell us you have to celebrate it with them. Black folks to me like being a fly in the ointment. I call them human nats. Thank you for correcting that lyric. I call them human nats because black people learn from their black mothers. How many people remember when I said black women never refuse a look at me moment? That was one of my things that a lot of people steal. You know, they can't help but stealing from me, but not give me credit. Black women can never refuse a look at me moment. Matter of fact, they always tried to create a look at me moment. That's why these motherfuckers will wear these crazy ass, um, fingernails. They gotta do dumb shit to their fingernails, cause they need another bitch to say, ooh, who did that done? They just need it. I don't know why. Bitches need to do something. Their color, they have ninety seven different colors, cause they need another motherfucker to notice them. They will wear their ass out, cause they need somebody to see it. They will do all the wildest things possible, because they went from wanting to be, uh, just a part of the, the, the machine.
Let him cook. He cooking.
Me to being the thing that broke the machine. And that's what hurts. They now want to be the thing that broke the machine. Tell me I'm lying. Women want to be the loudest thing. Like I still don't understand right now why lesbians are, are so for, um, abortion. Let's see if that's in game with any of y'all. Listen to what I said. That's a smart question. Why are lesbians for abortions?
I'm for abortion.
Lesbians are with each other. What the fuck do they care about abortions? Why is an abortion a thing that a lesbian, uh, sometimes it might take a minute for the, uh, zales to go through. So hold on a second. When I get the email, I will tell you. Why do they care? They're not gonna get each other pregnant. So why are they going around and saying these women need to be able to have abortions? And they the main ones out there on the front line saying abortions for all. But that's what we have. That's what women do. Things that make no sense, cause they wanna break the machine. Women don't build structures. Women don't build families. Women don't build shit. You have a better time to try to sit there and tell a woman, let's go, uh, do shit outside. And they'll go do shit outside. Let's go do the yard and things, but just rare that she'll just get up. Now some of them are raised right and they'll go say, hey, we need to, this house needs to become a home. So if it's time to do something, they're gonna go make the house a home. And then a lot of them won't. You have to be doing something for them to do it. They're not gonna just say, let me do that. But man, we'll build. I, we need a place where our head is, 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 we can lay down. We'll do that. We need a bed. We'll, we'll do that. We need running. We, we need running water. We'll do that. We need new tires, uh, on, on the car. We'll do that. We need to change the oil. We'll do that. Because of what men do. The women will destroy what that man built. How many stories have you heard about women killing men for their money?
Oh, a lot.
How many stories have you heard about men who made it and made something of themselves and a woman divorcing them and taking half? So when I talk about women, women get upset.
He ain't lying, Rio. He ain't lying.
When I talk about women, that is one of the bane's of the black existence. It's a bane of the white man too, but he gotta deal with his own bitch. And he does. He doesn't ask us to help him. Black History Month. We keep asking the white man to observe our history. Why do we need the white man to observe our history? Even when they say certain things like, black history is American history. Well, duh. But why do we need them to observe our history? Why do we need white schools to teach black history? Have any of y'all ever wondered that? Jasmine Crockett, Representative Hood Rat Jasmine Crockett, went out and tweeted that Donald Trump has done away with Black History Month this year. A representative of the United States of America tweeted this and never retracted it. Never took it down. Black folks went right along with her and were upset that Donald Trump is counseling, canceling, I said it correct, canceling. Black History Month. One. How did he do it? She should have showed us how he did it. What decree? She didn't. She just had to say it. She didn't show us the press conference he had. And yet she had hundreds of replies of people upset at Donald Trump for doing something he didn't do. Yet here he was today, talking about happy Black History Month. And telling America to enjoy themselves and go get some barbecue chicken and watermelon and great drink. That's what he said.
He ain't say that. He did not say that. This shit would have been all over the news.
He even hung out with Joe Biden over at Corn Pop. He's a bad dude.
How is Joe Biden?
Some black kids was swimming up to their leg and rubbing their leg. How y'all let that white man get away with telling these stories? That white man was telling disgusting stories and y'all was still voting for him. But Donald Trump did not say what she said. But it didn't matter, because they could lie. And so after a while, here's what I started to feel. I started to feel like black folks is getting on my motherfucking nerves. And the reason black folks is getting on my motherfucking nerves, because they have no problem lying. So you don't wanna celebrate Black History Month, cause Donald Trump couldn't have stopped you from celebrating Black History Month, and.
Hey man, we, we been on hit, on this here YouTube app. Surrounded by ninety-nine point nine 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 eight percent of black people. And every lie that's been told on me. And y'all, I'mma just say y'all too, cause there's some of y'all in the chat and it's in the bushes that's watching that this has happened to as well. All the lies that have been told on y'all have been told on y'all by somebody black. This is just facts. He just said it. Niggas don't mind lying. These motherfuckers get on here every day and they don't mind lying. Like for instance, saying they gonna cam up. Like for instance, saying my appeal was denied. Like for instance. Saying that the white power page was a page dedicated to Christopher William Wiggnall. Like for instance, blaming karma loops on five different motherfuckers. Niggas don't mind lying.
In your community and in your families and in your home.
I see some X in the chat. Who got mad? Who got mad? Oh.
I could celebrate my girl got a fat ass for three hundred sixty-five days of, of the year. I could wake up every day and be like, man, that's a fat ass. I'll just have a celebration for this ass. We get some kids. I could celebrate with the kids. You know, your mom got a fat ass. She do.
I, I, I agree with the troll though. Fuck Trump. Uh, it is what it is. I say that about all politicians though. That, that's the weird thing about me. I can say fuck bad, and I can also say fuck Trump. I'm not invested in either one of them. At all.
Today, the government could not stop me. Then I can sit up there and have a neighborhood. My wife's ass is fatter than y'all's wife's ass, and I'm gonna need y'all to celebrate this. And they probably celebrate it too. She wears nice pants, some tight pants, jogging pants and run around the neighborhood.
Shout out to the twenty-four people.
You slap that ass. We can do that. The president couldn't stop us from doing it at all, could he? We could have a big old orgy in the neighborhood where everybody get to enjoy that ass just once a year, and everybody would be looking forward to it. The president could not stop it. He could not intervene. I wouldn't need the president, nor would I need any of y'all to come celebrate my girl's fat ass. Black folks celebrate criminals. We don't need anybody else to come help us celebrate them, now do we? We celebrate the hell out of a nigga.
A big, big meat.
We celebrate the hell out of a nigga.
None, y'all. My nigga.
To help us celebrate this? We celebrate the hell out of dumb niggas in black schools.
Nigga. You just gave, you just gave them just to random people, but it's all good though. Welcome back, my G. I'm telling you, I had to come out here. I had to, I ain't, no, no. LTG, I ain't beefing and nothing, but remember, you had thought, no, your maybe had passed, and I had to come out here and say, no. No, I talked to no you. Ain't no wrong. Nope, nope. She is not dead. She just gone. Nope. Then they thought it was cause you got docs stuff like that, that I heard. None, none of you smarter than that, G. None of you is smarter than that. This why she see her run around here saying docs free, my G. Docs free. But yeah, I had to tell them folk, no, 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 no. She good. The hell is that? Something walking in there. Is that a squirrel in the bushes? Uh.
Thank you, Sister Avanti. Ten dollars coming on the cash app. Thank you, sister. Next time, make it twenty, but thank you for that ten. I know you barely had that. Thank you, sister.
We celebrate holes down. Yet all of the sudden, we need white people to celebrate Black History Month. Let me tell you why I think we need white people to celebrate.
Hey, sir, you get back from this holiday trip. I swear, true story. I got really sick the second, last day of the trip. So we got a new sponsor, All Family.
White, Black History Month, because we know if white people did not do, it would not happen. We know if white people didn't put together floats, there would be no floats. If white people didn't put together banners, there would be no banners. If white people didn't put together programs and shit on television that y'all could watch on Black History Month, there would be no television shows and programs. You can't tell me I'm lying, because if it were not true, we wouldn't need white people to do none of these things. As a matter of fact, here's what I don't understand. Why is it that Black History Month isn't full of black people only shopping at black places?
I could see who, who the membership went to. Let's see. A membership went Teresa, Georgia Girl, First Lady Brown. I know them three. I don't know who KK or Tweety is. Let me go to KK page. Go to channel. There's nothing on there. It's just an avatar. They've been on there since twenty twenty-one. All right, uh. Tweety. They definitely like a troll. Go to channel. Well, they got a playlist, at least. Been on there since twenty eleven. Um. Let's see the playlist. Bobby James and New Life. His gospel up in there. Yep. Two gospel playlists named Tweety. I ain't think, I know three of the five.
Hell, on Black History Month, you could only tweet another nigga. I will not retweet or retweet anybody else but a black person, just for that month. I want y'all to imagine this. How much money do you think would flow into black businesses and black pockets if just for that month? The seventh largest nation on earth spending power wise. And that is the black American nation. They just spent money amongst themselves. You wanna talk about the power of a meme coin? Wouldn't you have it? Here's another one. Look at all them white people being able to create these meme coins and make money off of it. Where's the nigga meme? The nigga meme coin. Let this nigga make all this money these whites making. Y'all love criminals so much. How come Black History Month isn't blacks raising money to get blacks out of jail that can't afford to bail themselves out? How come Black History Month is instead of Jews doing, uh, the Innocence Project, blacks took over it for a month? Don't do it the whole year. Let, let the Jews have it for eleven months. We'll take over it for one month. What about for one month, you don't spend any money on Asian hair? Just wear your own, cause we're so pro-black, let's let niggas look like niggas for one month. Just one month. Just one. Can we figure out what we've been doing wrong?
Thanks again, no you.
Why your weave has to be so long? What are we doing wrong? We won't. And since we won't, that is why I said, Black History Month is just a bunch of bullshit. Because let me tell you something. Since its inception, I have never heard niggas in my family or families around my family say what they are doing for Black History Month. Never heard it. I've never heard niggas say, we're going to do this. There is no, y'all could tell me if y'all do it, I don't know. What do y'all do for Black History Month? What do y'all family teach for Black History Month?
Not a goddamn thing if we just be a one hundred, nothing. Most of us, uh. The only thing we see is the program at the children's school. Other than it, nope. Nigga ain't watching Roots, Amistad, none of this shit. Nope, nothing. The church ain't having no program. After, just nothing. Nothing at all, sir. And we just gonna be one hundred black people. Can we, can we admit that we don't do shit for Black History Month, other than go to the program at our kid's school if they in it? If they in it, we damn near ain't going to that. Can we just be honest, black people? I'm just saying, th- this is a moment to self-reflect and look in the mirror and introspect. Can we as black people say, we don't do shit to celebrate Black History Month? We have like, if we being honest. The little Black History Factory that we get during Black History Month is, is bought and paid for by a white establishment on a white TV station, and they play their jet for us to see and be like, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But we, we don't. We ain't doing nothing. We ain't barbecuing. We ain't getting together. No turkey, no ham, no dressing, no gray beans, no chilts. Black eyed peas, none of this shit. Yeah, this is a regular month. Even when Dr. King birthday come up, ain't, we ain't doing shit. What we do? Nothing. We ain't cook like we do for all these other jets. We, we didn't do shit. It's just like, oh, may, may have heard the I Have a Dream speech if you was listening to the radio or watching the right TV station at, at the right time. But nah, nothing.
What about on the twelfth day of Black History Month? These negro gay to me. We celebrate this nigga. Everybody know about this nigga. Each year, we learn about a new nigga per day. Let me tell you what I've learned since the inception of Black History. Nothing that whites didn't teach me.
Damn.
When I was in school, the white folks would have these days of talking about a black person. When I got out of school, that was done. Let me say this to y'all again. When I was in school.
He live with me towards Washington Carver.
I got to learn about important blacks during.
Same here. First through eighth. Number whites. Me and my brother, only black people in the school. He was four years older than me. So when I got to the fourth, I was the only black person there. Until the eighth grade year, when this black chick came in. So, yeah. And there was not, the only black person, okay, the black people that worked there was this one armed nigga named Earl. And then the, um, staff in the kitchen. It was a brother and sister that was in the kitchen. Yep. Two black people in the kitchen and Earl did, that was the handy man. I can't remember who cleaned up. I can't remember the cleanup person, if they were black or not, but yeah. It was only blacks in the school, no teachers. No, no teachers whatsoever were colored, just to help. That's the type of schooling I went to. Yep. Black History Month. My mama went to an HBCU. I got to go to a couple of her little black, whatever the fuck classes them was and see some things, but nah, was it, was it a formal being taught? History outside of what was being taught at school? Nope. And all of us got this story. All of us do. Can't even front.
Black History Month.
We literally learn Black History Month from white people. Can't deny it. Another introspective moment, black people. We got introspect. Who taught us black history? White people. This is gonna be totally off subject, and I'mma push play. Who taught us the Bible? White people. I'mma push play.
Those white teachers were reading. Reading what they were learning themselves as they were teaching me. The shit was new to them too. And when I got out of the white schools, I learned nothing else from niggas. There are no, no niggas. Matter of fact, why y'all tweeting anything about white people today? And what white people ain't letting you do and how white people ain't celebrating it. The only thing your ass need to be doing is teaching other blacks the importance of, of unity, lineage, or whatever the fuck it is y'all wanna talk about, but that should be the only thing they talking about. Am I true, true or false? You should be pushing that this is the thing you do. Ain't that what Jews do? Jews don't go around talking about some y'all don't know about. Do they do that? Do they try to tell you what y'all don't know? Or do they tell their own offspring and people of their tribe what they need to know? Because that's what's important. Teaching those from your tribe why this is important, because this month is tribal. It's tribal. It's black. And so all you should be doing is teaching, uplifting and advancing your tribe. But you won't. Because you want white acknowledgement, because you know without white acknowledgement, this month will go the way of the dodo bird. Because blacks are doing nothing. I live in Atlanta. You know what Atlanta has told me they're gonna do for Black History Month? Not a fucking thing. The most a nigga might do is have a barbecue. The most a nigga might do, I don't even hear about Black History Month with a, black stores are saying fifty percent off everything for other niggas. Double the price for whites. But that's just it. See, that's what blacks want. Blacks want reparations every day.
I had to do it.
Blacks want to be victims every day.
Doing the playback and things of that nature.
And that's not a masculine trait, to want these people to feel sorry for you every damn day. Do you not feel a little bit bad that you need these people to feel sorry? Do you not feel a little bit bad? Mopin says, hey, what's up Tommy? Chuck in a book also donated to the GoFundMe. Please, please donate. That's what I'm talking about. I haven't donated in a while, but thank you for everything you do, says E Clancy. I don't mean to offend anyone, and I try not to. I try to, when every time y'all get away from me, you at least think a little bit. And you learn a little bit. And you learn a little bit. When people ask, why do you talk so bad about black folks, black women? I say, you could easily prove me wrong. Why do you want me to say something nice? Instead of saying something honest? I could say something nice as, have you lost weight? You could also be fifty pounds heavier than the last time I saw you. But nine out of ten people would rather me ask them have they lost weight? Than point out that they gained fifty. The majority of the people in the room who heard me point out to this person that they've gained fifty pounds. Would then say, that's rude. But if I asked them, have you lost weight? No one in the room would say, that's rude. So acknowledging weight isn't the problem. Acknowledging the truth about the weight is. Acknowledging the gain is the problem. If I acknowledge the loss and the loss is real, then I'm in the same boat, you know, this is real loss, I acknowledged it, thank you very much, I've been trying to lose it, less. It was a person that wasn't trying. Kind of lose it. You know, like how when they. Say what's wrong with Chadwick Boseman? Come to find out, there was something wrong with. Chadwick Boseman, but it was wrong to acknowledge what you see. Why is that? Why is that, why is it, why was it wrong, why is it that they rebuked everyone for acknowledging a fact? Seems like we have a problem with facts. I was told once, we don't have a problem with fat shaming, we have a problem with fat shaming. You're gonna shame the fact, well, he told something that's true, I asked all those people who follow me online, I ask them all the time, even when that guy said, you're right, but you're a dick, why did he have to let me know I was a dick, he should have. Been uh very happy with the fact that I'm saying things that that's right, because guess what, me being a dick is his opinion. That's his opinion, just like when I said something about this girl, when I said um uh that Jasmine Crockett was bad built. And this guy told me, he said, and, well, in my opinion, I don't think she's bad built. I said, well, in my opinion, that's what the fuck I posted, not your opinion, it was my opinion. And the reason I posted that was because she went out of her way to make her opinion be known about this white girl's shape. Who apparently there's somebody who don't think she's bad built or or butch body. Which still, I don't understand how she got away with calling her that and not being called homophobic. Oh, I know how she got away with it, because she's a liberal and she's a black female, so therefore she's allowed to be a loud mouth child. She getting told. But let it have been a white man or a white woman that called somebody a butch, bad built butch body. Let a white man have said that to her. You're bad built butch body, what do you think? He'd been called sexist. Homophobe. At some point in time, we have to try and figure out, why is the truth so offensive to people? Now, now someone posted, let me see, sassy girl has become a monthly supporter, I like it. And also apparently there's been some people that have, let's see, we're at, oh. You got a few people that done hit the donate button over on the. GoFundMe, that's been my man Moe Bean fifteen minutes ago, sending a tar through fifty bucks at your boy, lyric speaks through twenty-five, thank you. Mike G through twenty at your boy, thank you, Marlena Matt, put five on us, so now we're at fifty-eight. Thirty-five, fifty-eight thirty-five, if you can do, if you can't, I understand, but please try. Let's check this out. Somebody sent this, I I don't even know what it is, but I'm gonna play it, because I'm I'm just, I'm feeling frisk and riskin'. This man said the Democrats have done, I have, he says the Democrats done created a super coon, Tommy sort of my yours Malcolm X compared to this dude. I don't know what he's gonna say. But apparently I'm. I'm not as big a coon as this guy, I think that's what this guy is saying, but let's just hear why this guy is less of a coon than I am, that I'm Malcolm X compared to what he said.
You Democrats! In the words of Beyonce, America has a problem, but Democrats, we're about to fix it, God bless you, thank you so much, let's get to work.
Beyonce said that?
I don't get that clip at all. That clip didn't make sense.
David Hogg.
Well, first off, y'all can look at him, y'all can say this nigga was sweet.
You Democrats! In the words of Beyonce, America has a problem, but Democrats, we're about to fix it, God bless you, thank you so much, let's get to work. David Hogg.
Man, he got booed first.
Also, they're all trying to put their candidacy up for. The DNC officers.
First of all, thank you Chairman Harrison, can we give a round of applause to Jamie? You. Thank you, thank you, who's ready to take the fights with the Republicans and win this thing? Are you guys ready to fight? It's been a long day, but guess what, we have a long road ahead, let's go and kick some ass. You Democrats!
Alright, here's my problem.
I don't get the clip.
He said, let's go kick the Republicans ass. Y'all gotta stop feeling that way. And I'm not talking to the Democrats, I'm talking to the Americans. Y'all gotta stop feeling like you need to whoop the Democrats ass, you gotta stop feeling like you need to kick the Republicans ass. Why is it y'all won't want to put the best candidate out there? And why is it you don't put your people in power in the government so they can go there and put the best policies for the people? I don't, I don't understand how it's. AFC versus NFC, I guess, it's not even that, it's more personalized than that, at least those are half and half of thirty-two teams. The sixteen on each side, what they're doing is is stupid. Now, Mr. Hogg went out of his way to talk about the millions. Oh, excuse, Mr. Hogg went out of his way to talk about the millions of dollars he's raised. Mr. Hogg said he has raised millions of dollars. That's why I look at y'all funny style like. Because I say, well, how did this white boy raise millions of dollars? That's what he bragged about. But I don't understand how. When I talk about America, Americans should be for what's best for the country. And when I talk about blacks, blacks should be for what's best for their community, and how is what's best for their community constantly telling whites that they're not giving enough to blacks? I want to ask y'all seriously, how is that helpful? Black folks have argued DEI, let me tell you what Black History Month is. Another fad to be forgotten. Yeah, oh yeah, I don't want to hit me. So therefore I'm gonna speak it. It's another fad to be forgotten, because blacks at one point wanted to be Negro, at another point wanted to be African American, at another point wanted to be black, and they all were great, they wanted to be back to Africa medallions, they wanted to be, now they want to be FBA, but they wanted to have recognition for Martin Luther King's birthday, when they got MLK's birthday, well, now we need to hold them up. Haven't you noticed that everything with black folks is just this fad of, once they get it, they move to something else and they leave what it was that they had, which is why y'all ended up having civil rights given to women, gays, and every other nation? Because when you got it, you no longer wanted it. Blacks are the people who are the children of rich parents. Who? Fuck with their parents. To get a toy. Just to see if their parents will give them the toy. And once they get the toy. They neglect the toy. And the only time that that rich kid who has been neglecting his toy will want to play with that toy or acknowledge that toy again? Is when someone else wants to play with said toy. We do the same thing when we have relationships with people. You have relationships with people. And they're there for you, you neglect them, when they seem like somebody else wants them, you now have a problem. Somebody said, you're miserable inside, I pray for you, guys, check this out, over on Instagram, this person says, I don't know what he's talking about, I may have missed something, I don't know, but I'm gonna take a look. Because I love context, and maybe the context is he wasn't talking to me. Maybe the context is he was talking to someone else, let me see. I can't see the. Why can't I see it? I usually can see the, the people, the. The chat room, but I can't see, no. Show more, Nick can't see it, I can't see it, but I think he may be talking to me, so I'm gonna go ahead and say fuck the context at this point, I think he's talking to me. And since I think he's talking to me, here's what we're gonna do, sir. Why would you need to pray for me? I am miserable inside, I agree with you, I am very miserable in inside. But I don't see how you would pray for me, sounds very Christian. Because if you believed I was miserable inside, I would A, question how you found me, and B, how you didn't just pray. If you believe prayer work, you would need to have. Hold me. But you don't believe prayer works, but you do believe insulting people that don't agree with you, that's what I'll pray for you means. Religious people have turned what was supposed to be a good thing into an insult. Whenever they tell you I will pray for you, it's never when you ask for it, or it even appears that you need it, it's because you have said or done something that they don't like personally. And if prayer really worked, they would just go do it. The only reason I brought that up is because it goes right back to what I was talking about today, or what I am talking about today, which is how blacks treat. Black History Month. They treat it as this thing they need to throw in white people's face all damn day. For twenty-eight days. For twenty-eight days, they need to say, we're black and you're mad that we're black. Are we mad that you're black? We would just like for y'all to enjoy y'all twenty-eight motherfucking days, twenty-nine on uh leap year. Go do what your niggas do. Leave other people alone, you got twenty-eight days to do whatever the fuck you want. And you choose to try and make me miserable within the twenty-eight days that you should be celebrating what and who you are. What you have accomplished. Twenty-eight days. To not only educate those from your tribe, but others who might be seeking to understand it as well. I don't know Indians that go around trying to force niggas to know about Indian history? Seriously, who who does it? There is no need. Because your history lesson is for your tribe. Anybody on the outside that wants to know, then great. Teach them. But a part of knowledge is wanting to gain it. So I don't teach these white people, they want it, they need to come, come get it. You know where the source is at? But this person wanted to let me know that he was going to pray for me because of the negativity that I spew, then what the fuck is going on with your life, because you shouldn't be online, you should be outside somewhere being positive. If you are online, you know what you could have been doing, starting one of these free spaces that I started. Y'all get thirty-one days of it, damn, sassy girl, that is wild. Just think about it. He could have started a space. And be the antithesis of what it was that I am doing.
The Dalton meeting was only like seventeen minutes, hey, can't handle the truth.
Like that dumb bitch said, I pulled a whole three sixty, well, bitch, you still doing what you was doing there. You went right back to it. When black folks say that shit, I had a whole three hundred sixty degree change in my life, you still doing the same shit there, bitch. You right back where you started. But they won't. Because niggas know they can't do it by themselves.
The bulk store is. One of my favorite places, this one may come as a surprise, because it doesn't have a healthy reputation, I mean, everything comes supersized.
People who do things for themselves, I want to tell. Y'all tell me if I'm lying. How many of y'all are good at creating shit? If you are a creator, tell them if I'm lying or not. Creators like to be alone when they're creating. But just do. Most people who are creators like to be alone when they're creating, because it gives you more freedom, people don't look at you like you crazy, check out better money, nobody looking at me. People looking at you when you first are trying shit.
Meeting was only seventeen minutes.
When there's no one there, create, that's why if you notice, creators like to be alone, yes, people get in the way, people get in the way of progress, people get in the way of all the things that you're doing, architects ain't gonna sit there and draw with a nigga looking over his shoulder. People will tell you, those of you who program computers or build computers and all these things, you do them by yourself, you have this area in your house, workroom or wherever, and you do it on your own, yes, I am an incel. If you just watch. The internet is just full of stupid motherfuckers, Ian Schaefer says Tommy's an incel. Yes, I am involuntarily celibate, I can't get no pussy. Why are you talking to me about my lack of pussy when you should probably be going to get pussy? I don't really know how that's even a diss for people. No, he won't come to the space, watch this, uh sir. How would you like to come up here and have a discussion with me about me being an incel? How it's important, I'll give you a link and you can come and talk to me about me being an incel, I'll start a space and you can come get on the space about me being an incel. Any of you who have a problem with me, I will literally start a space right now, you could jump in and talk about whatever you want. To me. As I'm talking, not to you, as I'm talking to my fans, oh, I don't have a mic, then would you do, please do me a favor, Ian, and stop talking about my sex life, because this show is not about it. I can't get no pussy, you are one hundred percent correct, but you know what I can do, get an audience to listen to me. So you know what I would focus on? So Steph Curry ain't out there dunking, you know why, because he can shoot. Now, you can try to insult him by saying he can't dunk, should he stop shooting? Saquon Barkley sucks as a quarterback, he's a really good running back though, he doesn't play defense very well. So I don't know why you'd want to discuss my lack of having sex, because I don't know if I got a lot of sex, would that make what I'm saying truer or not? Since you don't have a mic. Maybe you should say something that has something to do with what I'm actually saying, not where I place my penis. Or the lack thereof. See, I want y'all to see, to understand that, this is what, this is what happens. This is what happens. A real discussion cannot be had with dumb people, and dumb people, I said it a long time ago when I told y'all about how idiocracy was coming true, it has come true. People don't debate the points anymore, they just say weird things and you're supposed to be, you're supposed to feel bad that they said this weird thing to you. You didn't say it, nor did you say anything weird to them. Somebody sitting up here telling me how to fix the refrigerator, and I say, that's why you got that lump on your eye. And at least if I said, that's why you got that lump on your eye, then there's actually one there. How about this one? This is how you fix the refrigerator, that's why you don't have no girlfriend. I don't know this man, I know nothing about him, I just yell at this guy for telling me how to fix refrigerators, he don't have a girlfriend, well, let me tell you as I was talking earlier. Reason why people like to do things without people around them is because when people around you, they'll distract you from your goal. Now, if there's a guy who's really good at fixing refrigerators and don't have a girlfriend, maybe that's why he's really good at fixing refrigerators. And I'm not trying to fuck him, I'm trying to get my refrigerator fixed, now if I was trying to fuck him, then maybe that would be something I'd want to discuss. But if I'm not, and I just want to get my refrigerator fixed, I would probably go to the incel who's fixing refrigerators, because I know he pays more attention to refrigerators than pussy. Somebody tell me if I said anything wrong there. This guy who's not getting that, there's a reason why people will fast, and y'all ever heard of this, people fast off of sex and food, why do they say they do it? Clears up their mind. There's a reason why a boxer won't have sex before he fights. But yet y'all have made this word incel as this thing that makes this person less than, because. He can't get the modern day thought to fuck him, which is untrue, because anybody can get the modern day thought to fuck them if they got a couple dollars in their pocket. It is that to say to someone they're involuntarily celibate, when pussy can be bought? Is the stupidest thing on earth. It's the dumbest diss possible. There are ugly niggas with wives, ugly niggas with girlfriends, ugly niggas with babies. In today's. It's it's a stupid. Thing to say. But it's the best thing you had, sir. But you know what you didn't talk to me about? The refrigerator I was telling everybody about fixing. That's just it, that's why you have a lot of people who are inventors, people who are, people who do something. Are good at things, they like doing them by themselves, because you won't have the distraction of somebody trying to stop you from doing it, how many y'all remember in college, having a roommate sometimes was difficult thing to do, because when you were trying to do your homework, the roommate was saying we should go to the yard. The roommate was saying, why don't we go do something, they didn't have the same thoughts in mind as you did. They didn't care about your time, but when you were by yourself in a in a room and you didn't have the distractions, if you didn't get the job done, it's because you. You didn't, but if you were a person who likes to invent, who likes to do, who likes to come up with stuff, JR Tolkien is not wanting to sit down with eight niggas as she. you didn't. But if you were a person who likes to invent, who likes to do, who likes to come up with stuff, J R Tolkien is not wanting to sit down with eight niggas as she writes. Or he writes or whatever it is. I don't know which ones what, but they're not trying to do this with other people around. They like to get to the, if you read books, don't you get your book writ, uh, read a lot faster when you just sitting there? Even when it's a wife and a husband are sitting in the bed, you know what's good about sitting there with your wife as you read a book and they read their book? Because they usually leave each other alone and allow each other to read the book and go into whatever fantasy they need to go in, enjoy that book. That is when working in tandem works well together because that person understands how you work. But it is a sad thing that when we have Black History Month, that in this time of where we're supposed to be building, we want the white incursion. We are begging for the white incursion. We need whites to come in and infuse themselves and show us that they want to know about us. As they ask what they want to, what, please tell us more about your black history. Guess what blacks will know to tell them? Ask all these blacks online about black history and they have access to the internet so they can give you the answer as soon as they go Google it. They still, when, are they only smart enough to go do that? They couldn't take it. They tell you to go look. Wait a minute, if black history is so important to you, now that I'm coming at you looking for this man from heaven, why aren't you delivering? Why can't you give it to me? Why can't you just tell me? Ian, I'm an incel. I don't know what you, why you're still talking to me. I'm involuntarily celibate, so therefore I shouldn't be spoken to. You don't have a mic. And I asked you, since I'm an incel and you wanted the world to know that I'm involuntarily celibate, that my ability to be able to get pussy was paramount to you. That was the most important thing. I didn't ask you, can you leave me alone? Can you go away?
He, he was talking to somebody at the beginning of the show.
You go somewhere where there's a guy who does get pussy, so therefore you respect him. It's obvious you don't respect me or what I'm here to talk about today because I don't get sex. How you know this? None of us knows, but you know it. You know I don't get sex, sir. So leave me the hell alone. Go and listen to a man that gets sex. Cause see, he's, he's still talking. This is him. After I don't get sex, he wrote all that. Why would you want to write all that to somebody that don't get sex? It's gonna go one in one ear and right out the other one. Cause I don't get no sex. I can't hear a word you say, cause I, I don't feel.
Hey folks, Donald Trump Jr. here with urgent news. The world's central banks are making unprecedented
Okay, I didn't know the doubt to me was gonna be shout as the weekend.
Again, I asked y'all at the beginning of the show, why is it that niggas won't leave you alone? Grown ass men feel the need to just keep on talking to people.
They don't know how to leave you alone.
Ass men feel the need to irritate other men.
And women. And women, just grown black people in general do it and they can be sixty, all of them older than me. And they just, they just won't stop. No matter how much I ignore them, they just refuse to stop. It's funny as hell. They just won't stop. There's a couple of them younger than me, but that, the rest of these motherfuckers are old as hell. And they just won't stop. They just two years is not enough. Three years ain't enough. I don't know what, I don't know what these people want.
So as the brother said earlier, said, who's the real incel here? The one who wants to get the attention of another male and just keep doing it? Why would the first thing I say to somebody, you got a little dick? And then try to have a normal conversation with them after that. Well, their dick is still small. And I don't know why I would care how big their penis is in order to talk to them about Black History Month. Why would I even make that a thing? Right Chef X, no fathers in the home. This is crazy. No attention, all attention ain't good attention. I like my small corner of the world and it's nice. I enjoy it. But Black History Month has not become the thing that it should have become. And as I stated, it's because blacks like fads. The new fad is not Black History Month. The new fad is foundational black Americans. You got niggas sitting up there and bragging about Trump saying it. The fourteenth amendment is it? That's for blacks. It sure is. What do you do with that? Because it evolved. You can't now say the fourteenth amendment or for blacks who now have been citizens for a couple hundred years now, almost a couple hundred years. Am I wrong? You can't say that anymore. We don't need it. For him to even say that, why are black FBAs bragging about a law that was put in place after slavery? To ensure that the uh, children of those slaves were guaranteed citizenship. Why are they bragging about that? Who knows? Is there an FBA out there that can tell me? Maybe I'll open a space and ask, but where is, why is that important to them? It's dumb. But that's why there's no Black History Month because now we had a bunch of niggas that's talking about FBA. Same thing of two years ago, was it three years ago? There was the, we're so glad that they have made it a national holiday for Juneteenth. Y'all remember that?
No barbecues and nothing. Niggas just out.
Doesn't make any sense. Now Ian says, I'm sorry Tommy, I thought you were a groper. What does that have to, he heard me talking. He should have been addressing what I said and if it was wrong. I've been talking now for an hour and eighteen minutes. He literally could have found something in an hour and eighteen minutes of what I said that was wrong. You wouldn't have to think I was a groper. That's like saying, I thought you were nineteen feet tall, so therefore I decided to tell you, you couldn't walk through my door in my house. That is insane. That is ridiculous for an adult to say. What you thought I was versus what I was actually saying. But if you'd like to show me you're really sorry, you can hit that cash app, bro. Or you can hit that, uh, I have an Indiegogo. It's the first thing that's uh, Indiegogo and a uh, GoFundMe. It's right there posted. Want to show me you're sorry? Hit that. Said distractor. Yes, but I stay on point. So you have something like Juneteenth, which was new because Black History Month become a thing of the past, just like Martin Luther King, they had become a thing of the past. And because they had become a thing of the past, they gave them Juneteenth. Now Juneteenth was twenty twenty, when they gave it, or was it twenty twenty-one? It was twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. So it's really new. And we have forgotten all about that. Now we got FBAs and FBAs who claim that they're so American, don't even, twenty-one.
Just to put the hand in.
Three years. We're over it. We need something new. Blacks are the biggest faddish motherfuckers on earth. Don't believe me? Listen to them every day talk about lineage now, something you've never heard a motherfucker say just three years ago. Lineage? Crash out. Everything is a crash out from this group of people. Crash out, crash out, crash out, crash out. Delineate, 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 delineate. It's giving, it's giving, it's giving. That's diabolical, diabolical work. This kind of work. That kind of work, 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 work. It's all kind of stupid shit. They just can't help themselves. And then it'll get old and then they'll move on to something else. And it'll get old really fast. Cause niggas is always looking for the new fucking word, the new phrase, the new thing. Watch how this FBA shit dissipates in about two years. And it'll really dissipate. Yes, somebody always on demon time. It'll really dissipate. Yeah, some bitch ate. She ate, she ate, she ate.
It's giving.
It'll really dissipate. If they actually acknowledge you. So blacks want you to do is acknowledge they stupid shit. That's what I want you to do. You acknowledge my stupid shit? I gotta get some more stupid shit.
Yo, he gotta come in.
And I think that is sad. Because we dropped the ball on every movement ever since the civil rights movement. Ever since the boycott movement. Blacks used to just say, if you don't treat us right, we just won't go there. Somebody tell me if that's not the best thing for anyone to do. Isn't that what we say? Go where you're what, not what? Go where you're celebrated, not tolerated. Yet blacks want to be everywhere where they're tolerated and nowhere where they're celebrated.
Ding, civil rights movement. That was
Black women will have black men that think they're the best thing in the world. They'd rather fuck the one that barely likes them. And the one who think they're the best thing in the world, they'll treat them like crap. Why is that? Black folks will have businesses that love their business and will do anything to get their business. And they'll have another company that says, I don't want you around that mistreats them. They put the stuff behind the glass. They treat her bad. We go up to the counter. Then why in the fuck are you going there? Why are you making a big deal about they treat you bad when what you could do is not go back? I wouldn't say shit to them people to help them be able to put a Band-Aid on the bullet wound. Cause that's what they're doing when they sit up there and pretend they care about you. They still don't. They just don't say it in your face anymore. Now they're just spitting your food at Denny's.
Not Denny's.
You need white people to let you go shop in their places. Why? This motherfucker treats
It's a sign of status and making it when you can shop where the white folk shop at. It's the craziest shit in the world.
Too bad here. Why is it a national thing to get them to now add DEI policies? You need the federal government to force them people to take your money. Let that sink in. You want the federal government to force these people to take your money in a place called capitalism? Where you can make the same brand that they make. Instead of Pepsi-Cola, you can make nigga cola. Haven't y'all noticed that there's all kinds of brands of soft, of soft drinks?
My nigga cola.
They go, they got fucking Tab. They got this new kind of soda pop that don't have the shit, supposed to give you the face stuff, you know, you press the thing. They got all kinds of soda pop. Where's nigga pop at? I wanna pop, I wanna nigga. I wanna taste, I want it now. It's really all I want it now. I wanna pop, I wanna nigga. New nigga, drinks nigga. We could have one, why not? Why we don't have one? Because we'd rather give our money to Dab and Bap. We'd rather give our money to Coke. We'd rather have Sprite. We could have an NPFA.
Holy shit, that nigga cola.
Niggas playing football league. It's niggas. It's all niggas. Y'all got the NBA, we got the NPBA. Niggas playing basketball association. Every one of them, we could do the exact same thing. We don't need white folk. Why would you keep saying they won't let no black person play quarterback? They don't want to give up MVP. They don't It's mostly niggas in the NBA. It's mostly niggas in the NFL. Start your own league. How the fuck the XFL start their own league, but niggas didn't? How the fuck the USFL start their own league, but niggas didn't? How the fuck women started their own league, but niggas didn't?
So you said a Negro leagues?
Have I said something wrong yet?
Oh, my stomach hurts.
White people to acknowledge us. Before we had black mothers running households, black fathers didn't need white people to acknowledge that their sons were good at sports. We like being known around the neighborhood as good at sports. We was cool with that. We was cool being the best black person and then white people then started to come around and say they wanted to play us. Give their schools some practice, see how good their schools were and we whooped their ass and they started to realize them niggas better than us. But it wouldn't be an official game and nobody knew and they go on back to wherever they was from. But it played in their heads. We don't need integration. We want it. And that will always be black folks downfall. So Black History Month should be taught that blacks need whites more than whites need blacks. Because if blacks felt like they were self-sufficient, just like many of you right now feel like you're self-sufficient. You don't sit up and go to your mama's house and daddy's house every damn day, call them every day. Why? Cause you self-sufficient. Any of y'all who got children who went from being children to be adults, guess what happened? They needed to talk to you every day. They needed to lay up under you every day. They needed you to read a book for them so they could even go to fucking sleep. They needed you to kiss their boo-boo when they got hurt. They needed you to blow on their food before they could fucking eat it. Now all of a sudden, they don't even come eat with you. When they get hurt by somebody, they don't tell you. They might or might not return your text. They might or might not return your call. Do you know what happened to them while you stopped being the focal point of their life? Because they got a life of their own. When people get a life of their own, you stop being focal point. How many of y'all remember your ex used to call you all the time after y'all broke up? And then they slowly stopped. Your ex used to text you every now and again, just to see how you doing. Then they stopped. You used to be able to fuck her every now and again. Now you can't reach her. What happened? She got a life that no longer included you. She liked that life that no longer included you, so she didn't look back. Which is what the Bible was saying about Lot's wife. The problem with a lot of people is they do what? That means that they're not looking forward or it means that what they see in front of them isn't better than what they had behind them. Spaceships don't come equipped with rearview mirrors. They dip as fast as they can. The atmosphere is now ripped. I'm so like a pimp.
Andre.
I can only see forward if I'm black and that's what we should see, but blacks concentrate more on what's Tell me if I'm lying. No matter what we've created as blacks, why we always want to talk about the past? All day, every day.
So this how he kicked off Black History Month? He made some niggas mad.
Even the FBA movement isn't talking about what blacks are doing. They talk about what tethers did. You should be able to reveal the greatest amount of things that blacks have done in America from FBA. FBA should, this should be their time to preach. And I'm talking about, as I asked a person the question, I said, why none of the tech bros black? Technology was doing the easiest non-racial environments. Anybody can ever be in and if a black person has been in it, they will tell you, I'm telling the truth. Then how come not one of the tech bros is black? How is that possible? They couldn't even keep us out of this field. It should be some blacks like that. It isn't. Was it a white man keeping them down? Even now, blacks should be looking forward at what we can do with what we already have. But they're not. They want white people to give them reparations. Keep building. You'll make it to where white people gotta give you reparations. Let me explain. There's a brother by the name of Christopher Nolan. How many of you guys know Christopher Nolan? What up, my man Brian in the house? How many of you guys know Christopher Nolan? Christopher Nolan did Inception, all that stuff. I've been in Washington a while. I actually used to love that movie. I wish I could go back.
I can't get in since and I never understood.
Christopher Nolan also did a movie called Tenet. I don't know how many of you guys saw that? Didn't see it. Tenet was supposed to be distributed in the movies. Well, didn't quite get that release and the company, I want to say it was um, the company who does Max, uh, he was working with them. And he got mad at them for putting his movie on Max. Uh, thanks Time Warner. But he got mad at them for putting it on Max instead of putting it in the theaters. He said it cost him money and he's telling the truth. But it was also during the pandemic and then, you know, people didn't know what to do. So they thought that maybe Warner Brothers, thank you. Time Warner, but so he said, y'all fucked me over. We told him to never work with him again. He didn't back away from that. He stood on, as you niggas love to say, on business. He said, I will never work with your studio again. About three years later, he received a check from Warner Brothers Studios, Time Warner, for ten million dollars. They just gave him ten million dollars and this is, he hadn't dealt with them. He stopped talking to them. He left them alone. He said, I will not deal with you. And he started putting his movies and television shows in other studios and he was making other studios money. They just cut him a check for ten million dollars. You know why they cut him the check for ten million dollars?
Cause they were gonna make it back when he came.
Cause they were trying to make up for what they had done wrong. He didn't have to tell them they did wrong. They knew they did wrong. That simultaneous release of films was fucking everybody out of their money. When people realize they did you wrong, they'll pay you. Cause they want to make more money with you. If blacks did what Christopher Nolan did and just move forward, you can hold the reparations chip on your shoulder. But make yourself invaluable. But make yourself invaluable. You know what white folks will do? When they start seeing that you're invaluable? When they start seeing that you don't need them? Ladies, what happens when your man starts seeing you don't need him? You ain't begging him to take you to dinner? You ain't begging him to take you on vacation no more. You just going on vacation. He don't even know who you're going with. You could be going by yourself. You're just going though. You could be going to dinner by yourself. You just going. You ain't gotta try to make it to where, oh, I'm gonna show you, somebody else want me? No, I'm just going to live my life. What will he start doing? Fellas, what will she start doing? They will come to you in hand. They will give you all the money you lost. They will try to pay back. They just wrote this man a ten million dollar check. He cashed that check and still won't talk to him. That's crazy. But you know why he did it? Because he's saying you can't buy me off? You owe me this. You didn't give me something that I'm, what would you give me? You gave me what you already owed me. How many of y'all have had people do that and pay you back what they already owed you, like they did something? That's my money you gave me. You done gave me my money. That's how Christopher Nolan looked at it. You, that ten million is still probably ain't all the money you owe me. He still won't talk to him. They thought when they gave him that money, he was gonna start, say, listen, I'll, I'll start working with you in the studio. Because you need some help over there on HBO Max. No, I still won't work with you. Because if you could just write me a check for ten million, that probably mean you owe me fifty. You didn't just give me that for nothing. Is she the cool piece? I'm gonna need that interest. Black people, let me give you another example of somebody who did this. And then I'm gonna let y'all go. You ever heard of a man by the name of Dr. Dre?
You're not a child, you're a man. So stop wearing so many layers to go outside and get the Bearskin Tactical Hoodie 4.0.
Dr. Dre started a company. He started a company called Death Row. And see, this is the problem that you niggas have. Sometimes you don't want the money where it's coming from. Sometimes you need to lead their people with their money so they have no hook in you. Dr. Dre left. He was told, you can leave Death Row, but you can't leave with no money. You gotta leave, you give no money, no masters, no nothing. That's the only way you can get out this deal. And because Dr. Dre believed in himself and what he could do, you know what he did? He said, so I won't get to take any of my money out of here. But my contract is clean and I can go start my own company? So I start with zero. Ladies, how many of y'all left a relationship and a nigga said, said something about you got clothes or whatever in the house? And you said, oh, no, you can have all that. Fellas, how many times girl I told you, you left your Jordan, you left this and over that house? You said, oh, no, no, you can have, I, I, you don't have to worry about me wanting to come back and get that. When I said I wanted to leave, I was actually leaving within mind that you was gonna burn my shit. You, all that shit, you probably was gonna piss on it. I don't want none of that. You can have it. You know why you can have it? Because everything I had cost money and I have money to replace. I am not hard up for that. I can do this again. This was not a thing. I have no problem redoing this on my own. A girl tried that with me once. I said, okay. I'm gonna let you go through all that. Dr. Dre said, okay, you can have all the artists, you can have all that stuff. Go get me some new artists. I'll go get all this done on my own. And this one, I won't have a partner. It'll just be me. And he did. Aftermath, created Shady Records, created all that shit. It's under him and Death Row was sold for pennies. Right, when he did, he did the Chronic 2001, which came out in nineteen ninety nine. He was a, Should Knight was a dick. Which he shouldn't have been. The Should Knight did a black man dirty. You told this man, they told him when he did, when he did Chronic 2001, he had to name it Chronic 2001 because Dr. Dre, of course, wanted it to be Chronic 2000, show whatever. But he said, nope, not, you can't use that name. And then, knowing that he wanted to use that name, Death Row then did an album called Chronic 2000. It's, it's just childish. Dre said, fine. I know it looks silly having an album called Chronic 2001 that came out in nineteen ninety nine. I know it looks silly. I know y'all, y'all might get this shit confused with that Death Row shit, but no. If that's what I gotta do, then that's what I gotta do. Somebody who's always trying to hurt you will eventually hurt themselves. There's old sayings, like saying you drink poison hoping it'll kill the other person. That's what that kind of anger and hatred will do. Black folks, this kind of anger and hatred that y'all have at whites, you need to stop it. Just build your own shit. There are way too many industries where blacks, if we were as good as we say we are, if FBAs is good as you say, y'all, why the fuck do you need these white people to do anything? At this stage in history, blacks should be self-sufficient in the United States. True or false? At this stage in history, blacks should be self-sufficient. We should not need whites for shit and we shouldn't want them for shit. But yet we got so-called black leaders that like us to be hoes to white people. Children to white people. Begging the white people over and over again. And that's what Black History Month is. It's a culmination of begging. It is the twenty-eight days where we beg the most. Not the twenty-eight days where we show what we've done, where we are, where we're going. Black people are the worst at business plans. You notice you can talk to black folks and they can tell you, they want you to give them something. If you ask them, can you give me the business plan for it? They can't. Matter of fact, most of the time when blacks come to you and ask you for something, it's when they, by the way, they sell it. They're without you, they won't be able to get this shit done. Without you, no, no, no. Your grand plan is you need me to help you keep your lights on? That's your grand plan? Your grand plan is you'll figure it out after this? Your grand plan is they're about to kick you out of your house in five days? What the fuck were you doing? Surely they gave you, they gave you a thirty day notice, a sixty day notice. You, you, five days, then you talking to me? And what are you gonna do when I give you the money to pay for this month? Because you're two months behind. How are you gonna pay me back? How did you get the two months behind? Why you asking me all these questions? Why you asking me for all that money? That's what we've become as black folks. Have no plan. These niggas can't tell you what they'd even do with reparations. I don't know nobody who gonna tell you how much the reparations supposed to be, how they figured the number out, where is it supposed to come from? And what are you gonna do with it when you get it? All y'all niggas arguing about is who's supposed to get this imaginary money that nobody has offered you? And now there's a fight instead of for the history of blacks and for the future of blacks. There's now a fight for who is black. Can't win nothing like that. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, thank you guys for coming and joining the show. I may start a space. If people hit the GoFundMe, there's nothing wrong with that. If you hit the GoFundMe, I can go do
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, I just had to fill in some time because had I not, the Thornton Township meeting would have been seventeen minutes. And the only thing that happened there was Kamal and William Moore were fired. They were fired. And Tiffany says she gonna sue at the meeting before that when they suggested firing him. So we'll see how that goes. To the next episode, ladies and gentlemen, we out.
Never been a hoe, I stay on goonson with the business. Nigga talking reckless, shoot this bitch ass with the quickness. Name bleeding, sorry, beggar, asking for forgiveness. Bow, 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 lip biscuit. All my niggas wildin', they done labored us to miss fit. Wake up every morning, two or three, five in the thick bit. Oh shit, get nobody come to see you old, it's some focus. Shoot a hundred shots, no reloading. Master of the game, you would think I'm into coding. Niffish niggas, spiffish spiffing, macking like I'm golden. Ho, where my money, you gonna turn me to the oldie? Say hi, first class flight, I'm in the nobly. Copy, cook it, whip this shit, it's easy, count the proceeds, OG. I've been moving pack niggas since old three. Low key, niggas hating, but they don't want no beef. Stay gang, true sippers, bitch, I bet we go eat. Get jam, get a lawyer, make it bunny, don't speak. Pour a four, I need some more, nigga had a long week. Shout out to my plug, he show we love it, out of lone beach, I'm too geek. Walking by myself, I left with two freaks, fool me. Nothing in their mouth and on their booty. Austin power swag, yeah, baby, this is groovy. You can call me money boy, or you can call me nudey. Good nigga, search his chick and let me get a two piece. Top down, juicy, let me feel the true breeze. Got a holdy steady chopper, kicking back like Bruce Lee. Lately, I've been in the zone, I guess I'm in my two, three. Don't call my phone for nothing less than a QP. Feeling like the Migos, cause my bitches bad and bougie. All my haters love me, all these bitches just some blue bitch. Came a long way, I like to introduce the new me. Standing on dinner like I'm king, or like I'm Drew skin. Call me run, I like, cause I like my lover's shoes. Yeah, when we licking some movie, she busted like a Uzi. I love the way she do me. I beat it up like Gucci. She dancing just like Suki. Call me run, I like, cause I love my lover's shoes. Yeah, when we licking some movie, she busted like a Uzi. I love the way she do me. I beat it up like Gucci. She dancing just like Suki. I never been a hoe, I stay on goonson with the business. Nigga talking reckless, shoot this bitch ass with the quickness. Name bleeding, sorry, beggar, asking for forgiveness. Piss ass nigga, bow, bow, lip biscuit. Never been a hoe, I stay on goonson with the business. Nigga talking reckless, shoot this bitch ass with the quickness. Name bleeding, sorry, beggar, asking for forgiveness. Piss ass nigga, bow, bow, lip biscuit.